I'm Attorney Eugene Cushman, I'm the town meeting moderator. Ms. Cheeseman, if you could lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Town Clerk, if you could read the call, please.
Notice of special town meeting. Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the town of East Line to be held on June 15th, 2016, at 7:00 PM at the East Line Town Hall Upper Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, to approve an appropriation in the amount of $643,696.26 for the purpose of acquiring by way of lease or purchase various vehicles and equipment, more particularly described by the town's FY 2016-2017 Equipment Acquisition Plan as evidenced by one or more agreements for the acquisition of said vehicles by lease or purchase or combination thereof for a total price of $619,500, plus interest at the rate of 1.57% per annum, payable in annual installments of $128,739.22, which is $10,728.27 per month over a period of five years. The First Electman is authorized in the name and on behalf of the town to execute and deliver any documents that may be required in connection with said transactions. To approve an appropriation to the Board of Education in the amount of $223,438.97 for the purpose of acquiring by way of lease or purchase or a combination thereof various new computer and smart board equipment for the high school, middle school, Niantic Center School, Lilly B. Haynes, Flanders School, Coastal Connections, and the Central Office, more particularly described in East Line Public Schools' proposed Year-One Computer Replacement Plan 2016-17, the total amount of $215,040, plus interest at the rate of 1.57% per annum, payable in annual installments of $44,687.78, which would be $3,723.98 per month over a period of five years. Number three, to approve a special appropriation of $235,000 from the CNRE for various projects consistent with the Capital Improvement Plan. Town projects, roofs, $25,000. HVAC replacement townwide, $10,000. Sidewalk repair townwide, $25,000. Town projects various, $75,000. Replacing cooling tower ELCC, $20,000. Revaluation, $80,000, for a total of $235,000. Number four, to receive communications from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance with respect to a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $900,000 for the Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads" and authorizing the issuance of $900,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Madam Town Clerk, if you'd just note we've received that item.
We have, yes. Number five, to consider and act upon a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $900,000 for the Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads" and authorizing the issuance of $900,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Number six, to receive communications from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance with respect to a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $720,000 for the Reconstruction of Town Roads in the Bush Hill Neighborhood" and authorizing the issuance of $720,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Madam Town Clerk, if you could just make note we've received that communication.
And to consider and act upon, number seven, to consider and act upon a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $720,000 for the Reconstruction of the Town Roads in the Bush Hill Neighborhood" and authorizing the issuance of $720,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. And number eight, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting. Copies of the proposed bond resolutions are on file and open to public inspection at the office of the town clerk, dated at East Line, Connecticut, this first day of June 2016. And the call was signed by the Board of Selectmen. It was posted on the signpost. It was published in the day newspaper, filed in the town clerk's office.
Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. As usual, we'll go over the ground rules for a town meeting. Under Connecticut General Statute 7-6, you must be an elector of the town or be 18 years of age, a U.S. citizen, and own taxable property on the grand list of 10, 1, 15, in the amount of $1,000 or more. Under Connecticut General Statute 9-360, any person that's not qualified to vote but does vote could be subject to a fine of not less than $300, nor more than $500, be imprisoned for not less than one year, nor more than two years, be disenfranchised, or all of the above. I will appoint the registrar as tellers and checkers should they be needed. If you wish to speak, please come up to the podium and give your name and address for the record. If you're not eligible to vote at the meeting, please make that fact known before you make any address to the meeting. Do not conduct any dialogue amongst yourself. Please direct any questions or comments through the moderator. We will address only the items on the call tonight, and they will be taken in the order they appear on the call. Motions may be made to approve an item, to disapprove an item, or to reduce an expenditure, but you may not make a motion to increase an expenditure. That being said, we will move now to the first item on the agenda, which is to approve an appropriation in the amount of $643,696.26 for the purposes of acquiring by way of lease or purchase various vehicles and equipment, more particularly described in the town's fiscal year 2016-2017 Equipment Acquisition Plan as evidenced by one or more agreements for the acquisition of said vehicles by lease or purchase or a combination thereof for a total price of $619,500, plus interest at the rate of 1.57% per annum, payable in annual installments of $128,793.22, or $10,728.27 per month over a period of five years. The First Electman is authorized in the name and on behalf of the town to execute and deliver the documents that may be required in connection with said transaction. Do I hear a resolution?
Come over.
Mr. Serry, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Hagan, Dr. Hagan, excuse me. The motion has been heard, has been moved and seconded, and I will hear any comment. Mr. First Electman, you wish to comment?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank you all for coming out tonight, standing room only. It's rare that we get a town meeting. We get so many people coming out to support the budget and the items that were in the budget. They say that for a reason. These items and all the things you'll hear tonight were in the budget. They were passed by the citizens of this town or a town meeting in the capital plan. This first item is the vehicle acquisition. We're purchasing a dump truck, a recycled truck, or very, very, you know, we don't want to go back to those trash bags 15 years ago. We have those recycled trucks, and one is coming up for needing to be repurchased. A utility body pickup truck replacing a 1999 Chevy. A patrol vehicle, one patrol vehicle. We normally buy two a year. This is a tough climate, economic climate. We've gone down to one, and we're going to try to keep the ones we're using now on the road. And we might see a little spike in our maintenance budget, but right now, we're going to go down to one patrol vehicle being purchased this year. And one tractor for the Parks and Rec for $65,000. Again, all these items are in the capital plan, and were reviewed at the town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. First Electman. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, or is that Mr. Rando I see back there?
Ron Rando, 194 Boston Post Road. I'll say the same. I'm glad to see all these fine people here. Usually, you don't get a lot of people at select a meeting. This money we're spending, we're going to bond, says Mr. Moderator. I would like to know, through you, sir, what our bonding debt is right now.
Would anyone like to answer Mr. Rando's question?
The acquisition plan, or, I'm sorry, Anna Johnson, Director of Finance. The acquisition program is not through general obligation bonds. It is actually through a leasing program for five years. And at the end of last fiscal year, we had approximately $2 million in outstanding lease obligations.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Go away here, please. So what this is going to, what will this, how much will this increase? This item you just told me, how much will this increase? With these, what we're going through tonight?
Ms. Johnson, do you know the answer to that? Or do you want to answer that question?
So we're purchasing $619,500 in equipment, and the total cost with, over the five-year period, is $643,696.
Well, what I got to say is, you know, things are tough all over. And I think we should watch what we do. What are we going to do with the old equipment? Are we going to put that out for bed to get rid of it?
Is that a rhetorical question, or do you want an answer?
I want an answer, sir.
Would anyone like to answer that question? Mr. First Electman?
Chuck. Joe? And Chuck. Perfect. So is Chuck Holyfield? Chuck Holyfield, 468, our Boston Post Road. I'm a fleet manager and a highway supervisor. The intent is the pickup truck will be sold off at auction. The garbage truck will be traded in at the time of purchase. The tractor that we're replacing for Park and Rec will be traded in at auction. And the determination on the dump truck will either go to the water department, or it will be sold at auction also.
Thank you, Mr. Holyfield.
Thank you, sir. I have a few other items, but I think that'll have to be later. But we're spending an awful lot of money. We're going to be looking at either building new schools or repairing schools pretty soon. And I think it's very tough for the taxpayers today to try to pay their bills. And I personally think this is a lot of money to spend right now, and I will be voting against it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rando. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, we'll move the question. All in favor of to approve an appropriation in the amount of $643,696.26 for the purpose of acquiring by way of lease or purchase various vehicles and equipment, more particularly described in the town fiscal year 2016-2017 Equipment Acquisition Plan as evidenced by one or more agreements for the acquisition of said vehicles by lease or purchase or a combination thereof for a total of $619,500, plus interest at the rate of 1.57% per annum, payable in annual installments of $128,739.22, $10,728.27 per month over a period of five years. The First Electman is authorized in the name and on behalf of the town to execute and deliver any documents that may be required in connection with said transaction. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the resolution carries. The next item on the agenda is to approve an appropriation to the Board of Education in the sum of $223,438.97 for the purpose of acquiring by way of lease or purchase or a combination thereof various new computers and smart boards, equipment for the high school, middle school, Niantic Center School, Lilly B. Haynes, Flanders School, Coastal Connections, and the Central Office, more particularly described in the East Line Public Schools' proposal, Year-One Computer Replacement Plan 2016-2017, the total amount of $215,040, plus interest at the rate of 1.57% per annum, payable in annual installments of $44,687.78, or $3,723.98 per month over a period of five years. Is there a resolution?
So moved.
I don't see who that is. Oh, Ms. Cheeseman, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hagan, Dr. Oh.
Mr. Slaner.
Mr. Slaner. Would anyone like to be heard?
Good evening. Jeff Newton, Superintendent here in East Line. As reported out to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, this is a continuation of replacement of old computers, monitors, as well as a continued replacement of smart boards in addition of new equipment as we replace, you know, old equipment. Split into two components, computers, monitors, hardware, as well as smart boards is the second piece.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, then we will move the question. All those in favor of approving an appropriation to the Board of Education in the sum of $223,438.97 for the purpose of acquiring by way of lease or purchase or a combination thereof various new computers and smart board equipment for the high school, middle school, Niantic Center School, Lilly B. Haynes, Flanders School, Coastal Connections, and the Central Office, more particularly described in the East Line Public School's proposed Year-One Computer Replacement Plan 2016-2017, the total amount of $215,040, plus interest at the rate of 1.57% per annum, payable in annual installments of $44,687.78, $3,723.98 per month over a period of five years. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying no. Resolution carries. The next item on the agenda is to approve a special appropriation of $235,000 from the CNRE for various projects consisting with the Capital Improvement Plan. Town projects, roof, $25,000. HVAC replacement townwide, $10,000. Sidewalk repair townwide, $25,000. Town projects various, $75,000. Replacing cooling tower ELCC, $20,000. Revaluation, $80,000, for a total of $235,000. I assume ELCC is a community center?
Correct.
Is there a resolution?
Hello.
Mr. Serry, is there a second?
Second.
Danif. Cunningham, sorry, I blanked on your name. So the resolution is on the floor. Would anyone like to be heard, Mr. First Electman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. All these items are in our budget. They are in our budget almost every year. I think the cooling tower is a new item that is coming up for a need to replace our cooling tower at the ELCC community center in about five years. And what we're trying to do is, instead of bonding it later, is to start saving up money now. Now, traditionally, all these items that Mr. Moderator just listed are traditionally funded at double the amount. But we're in a tight budget year. We have had some good luck with not having HVAC systems go down, roof repairs, et cetera. So we're scaling back these CNRE accounts this year, again, in order to save some money on the budget and recognize this tough economic times, as Mr. Rando has pointed out. This is a revale year, so we are putting $80,000 toward the revale, whether we like it or not. The state requires us to do that. This is one of those years where they don't come into the house. They just send you a postcard and an update and look in the records and see if you've done any updating. But it's a year that we'll have to pay, so.
Thank you, Mr. First Electman. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir.
David Brady, 6 Old Oak Lane. I have a question on sidewalks, sidewalk repairs. Is there any funding for new sidewalks, especially on East Patagonia Road where it ends up to Bush Hill? That road is terrible to walk on.
Would anyone like to answer that question?
I can answer that, no. I mean, we have $25,000 put aside this year for sidewalk repair. I can tell you that that's a major project that requires engineering and taking of land or exercising our right into the right of way. We do know, it is prioritized on our, we have a list, and that is one item, one area, that we do need sidewalks on. Another one would be around Gordon Pond, and we are currently engineering for that project right now. There is federal funds available for walking systems, and both of those, we think, would qualify, connecting villages and parts of town. Nothing in this current budget.
How do we go about getting that into the budget? Not so much this year, but I'd like to see it before my lifetime ends.
I'd like to see it before your lifetime ends, too. We could have a coffee and talk about it, and sit down with Mr. Begar, our Public Works Director. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, we'll move the question. To approve a special appropriation of $235,000 from the CNRE for various projects consisting with the Capital Improvement Plan. Town project roofs, $25,000. HVAC replacement townwide, $10,000. Sidewalk repair townwide, $25,000. Town projects various, $75,000. Replacing cooling tower for ELCC, $20,000. Revaluation, $80,000, for a total of $235,000. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay. The ayes have it. Item four on the agenda was to receive communication. We've already noted that it has been received, so we'll move to item five. Item five is to consider and act upon a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $900,000 for the Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads and authorizing the issuance of a $900,000 bond of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose." Do I hear a resolution first, Mr. O'Connell? Are you making a resolution?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Cheeseman. And Mr. O'Connell, I understand you are required to read something into the record. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Moderator. These resolutions are bonding resolutions prepared by the town's Bond Council. They would take about 10 minutes to read, but the Bond Council has advised us that so long as copies of the resolutions are available at this meeting, which they are, and so long as copies of the resolution has been posted in the clerk's office, which has been, the resolution need not be read in its entirety, and I can introduce it by way of a summary, which consists of the first paragraph and a portion of the second, which reads as follows. "The sum of $900,000 is hereby appropriated by the town of East Line, Connecticut, for the Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads, including reconstruction, grinding and overlay, micro paving, chip sealing and crack sealing, and administrative financing and costs of issuance related thereto. Said appropriation to be inclusive of any and all state and federal grants and aid thereof. To meet said appropriation, bonds of the town or so much thereof as shall be necessary for such purpose shall be issued, maturing not later than the maximum maturity permitted by the General Statutes of Connecticut revision of 1958, as amended from time to time." Now, Mr. Moderator, I offer this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Would anyone else like to be heard on this resolution?
Joe Begard, Director of Public Works. The Public Works Department has evaluated all the roads in town, and each year, we come up with a paving list. This $900,000 that we're looking to appropriate goes as follows. We're looking to spend about $50,000 on crack sealing throughout town, $340,000 for cape sealing of roads, which includes the Corey Lane area, Patrick Place, Roxbury Court, South Colbers Court, Damon Heights, Cheryl Court, Naomi and Wilbur Lanes, Pelosi Wagon Wheel and Nelson Drive, Village Drive and Village Court. We're also looking to overlay Gurley Road and Riverhead in the Golden Spur area. This summer, we're looking to mill and pave Society Road from 161 past Lilly B. Haynes School to Riverview. That's a highly trafficked road, and the road's getting pretty beat up. We want to do it in the summer so we don't affect the buses. And then, the larger portion of the reclaiming of the road is the Latimer and Cavason Roads up in the northern section of town in Flanders. That's what the $900,000 constitutes.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Does anyone else have any comments? Seeing no hands, then we will move the question. All those in favor of enact a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $900,000 for the Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads and authorizing the issuance of a $900,000 bond of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issue thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose." Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay. The ayes have it, the resolution carries. The next item on the agenda is just to receive communication, which we have noted has already been done. The next item on the agenda is to consider and act upon a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $720,000 for the Reconstruction of Town Roads in the Bush Hill Neighborhood and authorizing the issuance of $720,000 bond of the town to make said appropriation, pending the issue thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purposes." Do I hear a resolution, Mr. O'Connell?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. And this is another bonding resolution prepared by the town's Bond Council.
Do I have a second, first?
Jamie R. Feldman.
Thank you. Okay. This is another resolution prepared by the town's Bond Council, and it's in the same format as explained before, and I will introduce it by the first paragraph. "The sum of $720,000 is hereby appropriated by the town of East Line for the Reconstruction and Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads in the Bush Hill Neighborhood, including but not limited to removing existing curbs, fixing drainage structures, reclaiming rolling and regrading the base, installing pavement and new curbs, and fixing drainage aprons, and administrative financing and costs of issuance related thereto. Said appropriation to be inclusive of any and all state and federal grants and aid thereof. To meet said appropriation, $720,000 bonds of the town or so much thereof as shall be necessary for such purpose shall be issued, maturing not later than the maximum maturity permitted by the Connecticut General Statutes of Connecticut revision of 1958, as amended from time to time." Mr. Moderator, I offer this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Is there any other comment? Would anyone else like to be heard on this?
Joe Begard, Director of Public Works. Typically, we like to do these kind of projects on this $900,000 that we usually vote on. The problem is, in the Bush Hill neighborhood, it's almost two miles of road, and if we were to spend the amount of money, which is what we budgeted, $720,000 out of $900, we wouldn't be taking care of the other 114 miles of road in town. So we're trying to get over the hump and trying to take care of this neighborhood. It's falling apart up there. It's in very rough condition. The plows are going to start ripping up the roads. But this is a significant project. It's about 7,000 tons of asphalt. The town has never had a project as big of a paving job. It's needed, and I hope we can move forward with it. We're lining up to do it this fall.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Would anyone else like to be heard?
My name is Mary Getch. I live at 18 Hillwood Drive. If anyone's been there, this is the way the whole place goes. And so, if we don't have drains, and we don't have proper drains, the water comes into our, into our property. property. And we also have one road, so you have to come in Bush Hill, go uphillwood, go up to Stonywood, and so if that road isn't in good shape, ambulances don't make it, fire engines don't make it. So it's a real need, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Getch. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Glenn Carlson, 6 Highwood Road. Highwood Road is one of the streets in the Stonywood neighborhood, or the Bush Hill neighborhood, and it is probably the worst of all the streets, and it is literally falling apart. My grandchildren play on it, people walk on it, but it's really becoming a safety issue. So something is, the whole road really needs to be repaired. But the other roads throughout the neighborhood are not as bad, but they are in working towards it. So while our street is probably the most advanced, the others are probably not too far behind. So literally, you can reach down on our street, and in some sections, you can just rip out a chunk of pavement, a square brick-sized piece. It's not bad. We have weeds growing up, snow plows tear up the road, and so on. So it's, this is a project that, for our neighborhood, is really, really important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no other hands, we'll move the question. On a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $720,000 for the Reconstruction of Town Roads in the Bush Hill Neighborhood and Authorizing the Issuance of $720,000 Bond of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation, Impending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowing for Such Purpose." Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed by saying nay. The ayes have it, the resolution carries. That being the last item on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. First Selectman.
Yeah, I just thank Victoria Chung, who's, you know, a student. She volunteers her time, and it's after school, you know? This is summer vacation, yet Victoria showed up tonight to help us out. Thank you, Victoria.
Madam Town Clerk, if you could make a note of that for the record, please. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Ms. Cheeseman, second, with someone. Okay, Mrs. Slano. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay. The meeting is adjourned.